All right, I want to, I want to welcome everybody to the April sixteenth. Can you hear me now? Can y'all hear me?
Hey.
Thank you, Ms. Ball.
I was gonna whistle, but I decided not to.
All right, I want to welcome everybody to the April sixteenth meeting. If I can get approval of the agenda, please.
Second.
Second, on favor, I. Mr. Wayne Greer, it's our pleasure to have you tonight to open us up, and we appreciate you. Come on. You can do either one. You want to do first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we're grateful that you love us so much that you sent your son for us, which we did not deserve. We're also grateful that you placed us in Jones County, a safe place to live. We have commissioners who are dedicated to our safety and our welfare. And we pray that you give them wisdom to make decisions that will not only please you, but be better for our county in Christ's name.
Wayne, I appreciate it very much. You did a very good job. We move forward for consent agenda and approval of minutes. You had the first Tuesday of April second. If y'all had opportunity to review the minutes, I'll entertain a motion.
So, second.
Second, on favor, I.
Aye.
Have it. All right, we move forward to resolution request for Department of Revenue for Tax Assessor's Office. Mr. Resner, got your name on it, and I'll key, I'll come in after you tell us what we need to do.
Okay, so the county received notice that our, our overall average assessment level on real estate values was substantially lower than, than the, the proper assessment ratio that's mandated in state law. There's a procedure that state law outlines where the, the Board of Commissioners can request a review of the Board of Assessors and, and that operation. That process is triggered by you passing a resolution, sending that to the State Revenue Commissioner. He then appoints a, a board, a three-person board that consists of one employee from the State Revenue Department, and then two assessors from other counties. They would serve as a, as a three-person panel to kind of evaluate our operations and, and make recommendations. You have some information there on, in your packet from the ACCG Commissioner's Handbook, and then the, the state law that kind of outlines this process. So if, if the board is so inclined to move forward with that, you would just need to, to approve the resolution in your packet.
All right, any questions for Ms. Resner?
Yes, I, go ahead. I'll let you go first, Daylon.
Age before beauty.
Who's older?
All right, so real quickly, um, how long ago was the last time we've had an assessment evaluation or we've gone through an octennial assessment? Do you know?
I do not know. It's every three years. I can tell you.
Yeah, real estate does every eight. That's why I'm asking.
The, the State Department of Revenue comes in every three years, DOR, comes in every three years and evaluates. I believe they are due to come into Jones County already, um, June, May, late May, June, sometime early summer. I've been running some numbers here. The submitted ratio for this year is thirty-three-ten. The Georgia Department of Revenue says thirty-two point nine. The problem is, if anybody follows some of the sales in the newspaper, I'm going to use Jones County News for example, they list real estate transactions. If you take the address, you put it in, you go to the Tax Assessor's webpage, and you see this property sold for this much dollar, and then you look at what it's on the tax books for. Some are double, some are more than double, some are a hundred thousand over. I've seen houses on the Tax Assessor's site, right here in Gray, could, could be anywhere in the county. Hundred and fifty, selling for two sixty. That's a hundred and ten over. It creates an issue. That lowers your sales ratio. I worked on the tax board for four years, one year as chairman. It's an issue, and COVID really blew this thing out of proportion because you have a lot of out-of-town people moving here. Welcome to Jones County. But it's thrown our sales ratio out of whack. And it's, and out of the hundred and fifty-nine counties in Georgia, fifty percent fell below the thirty-six percent ratio. I don't know if Anthony came to your office kind of explaining some of these items. It's an issue. The, the office realizes that the sales ratio is low. They're working to get them up. On the, and the property, if you have a property that's, I'm just going to throw a number out. If you have a property that's, would sell for two hundred thousand dollars, it should be on the tax books for two hundred thousand. But that way you're, it's, it's fairly assessed. Then you're going to be taxed at forty percent, and it's a whole matrix of numbers to figure that. As these assessments rise, it's going to be the Board of Commissioners' duty, and it can be done with talking with the Tax Commissioner, Brian Jackson. We've got to lower the millage rate, so as the assessments rise, the millage rate will be lowered. So essentially, you will pay the same tax dollars on the same house, but it'll be fairly assessed because it's, it's off when the properties are selling for seventy-five percent to a hundred and fifty percent or more of than what it's on the tax books for. And that's just somebody, it's fair market. Somebody's offering the money, the buyer takes it, seller's willing to pay it. It's arm's length transaction. It's a fair sale. But I just want to be noted that fifty percent of the hundred and fifty-nine counties fell under this because of the influx of people during the COVID years. It's really thrown it into a mess. But if you ask for this evaluation, for the Department of Revenue to come in, this extra whatever, they could come in and mandate the entire county be, the assessments to be raised somewhere north of forty-five percent over what this year's assessments are going to come out, May fifteenth showing. And that could be ugly. And I don't, I don't, I would probably let the natural flow of things happen of the three-year rotational audit that comes in with the Tax Assessor's Office, which is already coming. I would probably let suggest and recommend that that happen, and let's see what they say then. But we don't want to flag ourselves, so to speak, because they, I talked with Anthony over the weekend, and he realizes that the assessments are low. Even though they've been raising them, they're still low because the sales are outpacing the assessments.
Well, um, I've been getting calls. If you go to the Tax Assessor's website right now and look up your property and key on, you can't do it on your, your phone, but you can do it on your computer. If you, if you open up the map section, it will give you the assessment for 2024. That, my understanding is the contractor did it, wasn't supposed to do it yet, but they did. And like I said, I'd much rather let the people know that we've, you know, we've got a problem. We knew last year that after the audit, we failed. We appealed the audit. We lost the appeal. Now, um, we need to, we've got a lot of questions to answer. And we need to make sure, I think it was sixty-nine counties that, that came under, you were talking about fifty percent, but I think the number is actually sixty-nine counties. I don't care about those sixty-nine counties. I, I care about Jones County. And I want to make sure that we're, where we need to be. And if there's a problem, we, this board needs to know about it. And it's been years, it's been years since they had this, I think, Ms. Sibley, back in, before your time? Was this before?
No, I was here with Sibley.
Yeah. So this isn't the first time we've done this, but we need to go ahead and address it now, is how I feel. Make sure that, because just like John said, state can come in here and mandate us to do this. And we need to, we need to make sure that we're doing everything possible. Number one to explain what's going on, because Commissioner Wood did make a thing. Yes, this board can, can correct it. The best way to do it is, is a rollback. When I took the, a newly elected class, that one of those classes we took, I was, Mr. Davis teach it. He real, he real adamant. He says, you always roll back. He says, it's better to roll back than to cut. He said, because you never know the next, next budget session. You mean, you might need to go up a little bit, and there you go. You got a, you got a roller coaster. But he advised, at any time, you can roll back. And that's going to be our tool we need to use to, to help get through this. But we need to, we can have an answer. People are going to want to know what that is and why. And I would, we need to give them a heads up now, not, you know, open the mail and, um, like I said, they're going to probably wish we had our, our package sales going on at that time because probably a lot of people going to wish they could go and get one at the time because it's, uh, it's, it's shocking if you, if you look at it, ten, I think. Mr. Martin, you, you were fifteen percent on yours?
Easily. And, and that's why I asked the question, because I know there were some challenges to even some of the tax values when Ms. Sibley was here, God bless her soul, because of some of the inequities across the county. I know Tony and the team have been working on that for years, making that correction and the adjustment. And everybody's happy, because what that meant was if your property didn't get evaluated and they came across it, and property values in your neighborhoods adjusted, your taxes went up because your property value was more in line with the neighborhood. To John's point, I'm not necessarily a fan of inviting extra scrutiny when I don't need it. It's kind of like saying, I'm from Connecticut, so we have emissions. I definitely don't want them checking my car until I need them to check my car. But I, I'm cognizant of the fact, as a real estate broker, that property values are nuts. You can't, what, right across the road, I mean, four hundred thousand? Are you kidding me? And I was looking at a, a house that sold for seven hundred thousand on Clinton Road. Really? Make it make sense. So I know that, to John's point, the property values, COVID has impacted it. Northern people spending ridiculous money because they want a piece of this Jones County life, right? Are paying extra and, and above. And there, there were even some bidding wars happening post-COVID that have inflated values. And if our department didn't keep up, I, I would like to know the why behind that, right? Like, why they didn't keep up. But if this is a trend that has been going on since Sibley or even before Sibley, I'd like to know that, too. Like, how long have we been behind? The behind part has benefited all of us. That means we paid less taxes. So now we're going to have to pay the piper. But the correction to Chris and, and John's point is rolling back the millage rate. So at the end of the day, there, we're all going to get surprised because the notice is in there, like you said, and I'm up fifteen percent. I'm not exactly ecstatic about it. But we have an ability to correct it before it becomes an issue. So to me, it becomes a non-issue. If the emissions team came by and said, hey, you know what? You got to check engine light. I can fix it. So we got to check engine light. Let us look at the number, figure out what we need to roll the millage rate back, and then make sure that when the notices actually go out, it reflects the accurate value that we want to tax on. I'm not so inclined, and I agree with you, John, on this, to invite new scrutiny right now, especially if it could negatively impact the people.
You know, in speaking with Anthony, he brought up pools. Love a pool. I grew up with one when I lived in Gray. He said, every pool, when he came into his, in twenty seventeen, when he walked in, he said, why is every pool in Jones County? I think it was, he said roughly, every pool is five thousand dollars. Didn't matter if it was an above ground or an ex, with jacuzzi off, it didn't matter what it was. Every pool was five thousand. He said, we've been correcting that. He says, that's a lot of pools to look at. A lot of them you can't, you know, you just have to look at. You have to work through that. Some pools are not worth five thousand. Why were they taxed that way? And so some people are getting overtaxed. Some people are getting greatly undertaxed. Taxes are bad. You have to pay taxes for these good Jones County services we try to provide. I just, I know a lot of my assessments, and I'll say it, a lot of my assessments online are low. And I'm like, why? It's where, if I sold it, it'd be worth a lot more. If you sold some of your properties, you would ask well more. You'd be a fool to ask for what the assessment is. See, I'm, you'd raise it. Anybody would. But the assessments need to be a hundred percent of what the property's worth. We adjust, we as the Board of Commissioners adjust that millage rate down. That's something we do up here. And, but it's, it's the fair way to do it. I just, but I don't, to compliment what Daylon said, I don't think it's a good idea to invite the state in. Try to handle your problems in-house before you invite somebody else in to try to rule your house. Because I don't want a temporary collection order put on this county where we can only collect a certain percentage of our taxes until we get this resolved. And that's what, kind of what we're asking for. And it gets to be a, but I, I would like to have conversation with Tax Commissioner. And if assessment's raised this much, where do we need to be to be on target? So somebody on a fixed income is not run out of the county. And I worry about the taxpayers that are on fixed incomes, limited incomes, and working people, working nine to five, trying to put their kids through daycare, college, wherever it may be. I worry about them having a massive shock if we get somewhere twenty-five to forty-five percent from the state saying you must raise the evaluations. It's better to raise them a little bit along than it is just to somebody.
Chairman, I, I would agree with that statement wholeheartedly. That's what we're supposed to be doing, changing it every, a little bit along. So I think one of the problems that we're compounding our own problem is when we're what they call chasing sales. So if you're a va, you're valuing something based off a four hundred thousand dollar sale instead of a two hundred thousand dollar actual value, and the next-door neighbor has not sold anything, and his is still a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, that's a problem. You got two next-door neighbors on the same piece of property, exact same house, one at one seventy-five and one at four fifty because he sold it for that. That's not a fair assessment of that value. And it's also not a fair assessment for us to collect those taxes based on four hundred and fifty thousand dollar value or a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar value, no more than it is for us to assume the responsibility of a tax assessor or a tax commissioner. There is a reason why those boards are independent from us, because they do their processes based on state law. So the Department of Revenue already has a requirement of thirty-eight to forty-two. We're not meeting that, and we hadn't met that in a long time. To say that swimming pools eight years ago were in a horrible situation, that's a problem in itself for me, because for eight years, we hadn't fixed it. And we can say, we can go around and look at it, but if it takes eight years to, to evaluate every house, every house in this county...
That was an example of something that he dealt with when he first came in. And I, chasing sales can get you in trouble. And for that valuation, I think it was the one that was on the books for one fifty. It sold for two sixty. A lot of the houses in the neighborhood are in the same shape, but I think it was evaluated the next year at one eighty or one ninety. So he didn't move it all the way, but it moved up a little bit. So it's a gradual, he didn't move it from the one fifty to the two sixty assessment. He would move something like that a little bit, bump it up, to kind of get it more in line. And then the more sales that happen, the more you're going to get out of whack. And that's the reason we're kind of at the thirty-three-ten or thirty-two-nine this year. And so it's a, it's a, it's a moving target. I told somebody the other day, it's like having a row of trees, and you can't see your targets on the other side. And you're shooting arrows over the trees, and you're trying to get hit bullseyes. And you don't get to see what you hit till the end of the year. And they said, yeah, that's a perfect example. You can't see your target, but you're working towards it.
The, the challenge, right, that, again, on the real estate side is, again, to Sam's point, there's a house for one seventy-five, and this one sold for four fifty. And I know Chris and I, maybe some other people have been in the same situation, especially in Bibb County. If you call and contest it, they're going to say, well, the neighbor's house sold for four fifty. So thus, that house, your house, is now going to be taxed at four fifty. I don't know how we treat that here in the county, because some of this is relational, right? Well, you know, I'm going to call, and I'm going to get this person on here. I'm going to bring my attorney in, and we're going to have a conversation about this, as opposed to accurate and true values. I don't know what neighborhood is consistently valued right. I don't know. COVID, twenty fourteen, we were buying houses pennies on the dollars. But there were still homes in that neighborhood for two fifty, but we bought them for forty, and we're smiling.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, amen. And we're smiling today because we didn't get taxed at two fifty yet, because they can't just give us two fifty right away. It's a process. So in this county, I don't know how we've done that. I'm curious to find that out. I'd like to know that. Again, I don't want to invite the state. Is there some way that Brian, Tony, and, and the boards can give us that information or even ACCG, before we have someone come in and say, all right, everybody's going to go to forty or forty-five? Because I don't want to do that.
Well, Chairman, and this is one Commissioner's opinion. We are nowhere near what the state's saying we got to be at now. We know, based on what we're seeing on the tax valuations for 2024, that we're going to go up fifteen percent, twenty percent, thirty percent. We know that's happening right now. That's going to come in a tax bill to your mailbox this year.
But we also know that we have the ability to roll it back.
We have that if the state mandates it. And, and the, the state's going to come in and give you a recommendation. But the process, from what I understand, is to tell us, what I want to know is, how did we get here? And what, what do we need to do to not get here again? Because this is not something that happened overnight. This is, this is a process that somehow we're not doing something to get us in an, where we need to be. And I don't know what that process is, because we don't do that. That is the, the tax assessor's responsibility, but they, they are also going by state guidelines. So who else would we call in? I, I would rather the state come in now and say, yes, you're forty percent undervalued. And then that's the justification that we're going to have these high tax bills and the justification for us to roll that back, so that we don't have that burden placed on every taxpayer in this county. Rather than say, well, we know we got a problem. Let's see if there's a way we can figure it out, and then get two years down the road, and we've had a, this year, twenty-five percent increase, next year, fifteen percent increase, and then the next year, we go, guess what? We got a problem. Because we're still not valued right. Because I firmly believe that the assessments in this county are all over the place. And I don't think any, I mean, I can pull up people's addresses right now and prove it all day long. They're all over the place. And there's no rhyme or reason to it other than this one sold for this, this one didn't sell for this, this was during a peak time. I mean, we, we've looked at ebbs and flows, I mean, two thousand eight, two thousand fourteen, two thousand twenty. I mean, those went from the highest of highs to the lowest of lows. And we got to figure out what keeps that even and what makes that right. And I don't have a problem asking the state to do a review of our processes. I don't think anybody, just like we were accused of this board of coming in and doing malicious things, I don't think there's anybody in that Tax Assessor's Office that is intent to do any harm. They work in Jones County. They love Jones County. They're doing what they're supposed to be doing. But there's something in the process that's not working. And I, we talk about being transparent and open book and honest. Call them in. If they say we're forty-five percent low, then we're forty-five percent low based on their standards who create the standards. So then we got to do what we got to do. I don't, I don't mind anybody looking at my stuff if I got nothing to hide.
If I can add this, I believe, if I remember correctly, like, commercial properties looked at every year. Because there's not that much commercial in Jones County. There's a lot. There's not, not like the city of Atlanta. I believe commercial properties looked at every year by the Tax Assessor's Office. Residential is a lot more properties in Jones County. I think it's looked at with the limited staff they have. I believe it's on a three-year where every property is looked at. Now, some of it's, it may be a third this year, a third next year, and a third the year after. So you have a rolling process there. It's not like they don't look at properties for two years and they look at everything in one year. It's a rolling process, and then the sales get them looked at more often if a house sells periodically. So there is a process where all properties are looked at. There's a stepped process, and it's...
Well, Chairman, I, I can tell you with fact that there are properties in this county that didn't move a dime twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and are getting a huge increase in twenty-four.
That would align with the three-year.
Three years, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, nothing happened. If we're, and if they're assessed in the fourth year, then that's four-year rotation, not three years.
Well, three, and then you get there. And, and the reason why I say that, because again, on the real estate side, it's, anybody here a licensed appraisal, appraiser, just out of curiosity, right? Did you raise your hand? Oh, I'm sorry. So we use a sales approach, right? And then we also use what? The rebuild approach, right? And then we use an income approach. Those are the three approaches we typically use. So in this market, sales is what's been killing it, I think, to the point where we're skewed. Now, if somebody just, if we can get a report that says this property has never been, and I don't want to open up Pandora's box, because I know a property
I'm sure there are.
That we probably sat in front of a judge about. But, um, when you think about that to the taxpayer, it has been a benefit to not have to pay it. Now you got to pay it. It is what it is. It's kind of like you don't...
And I agree with that a hundred percent. But there's, uh, there's also properties that went up a little bit between twenty-one and twenty-two. A good bid in twenty-two, a good bid in twenty-three, and now still more in twenty-four. So...
Is it because there's more sales in that neighborhood, though? Like, what's triggering the activity in the neighborhood?
Well, why is one house assessed every year, and one house is not assessed but every four years? And another example that I got, and I know because I have undeveloped property that joins my house. My land and my house increased. Well, my house increased. My land didn't increase at all.
Yep.
Undeveloped land right next to me didn't increase at all. How can my value of my house increase and the land it's sitting on not be more valuable?
Land has almost always been a flat number for the most part, unless it's in commercial. That's typically how it flows in Jones County. On average, it's been, on average, it's been flat for resi.
But it's not always been assessed that way.
I don't disagree, but...
Now, if that's the normal rule, then that's fine. But that's not how it is.
So here's a question. At Porter, Porter at Landfall, remember when it was going through bankruptcy, you could buy a lot for fifteen hundred dollars? How much is a lot right now? What's the tax value on the property that I purchased for fifteen hundred dollars versus what it is per acre right now? It might be thirty-nine thousand. Did this person move from fifteen hundred, because I think that guy bought eight, nine, ten lots, to the thirty-nine thousand that it might be valued at today? And that's the question and the challenge, and why it didn't get caught or who didn't catch up. We could talk about disconnects all along.
So again, we're chasing sales then, because my property has not sold. So it's not going, the value's never going to change unless somebody on either side of me sells their property and mine increases.
And here's the fun part, too. Like, there's the disconnect from zoning and planning over to the Tax Assessor's Office, too. Because if I say, hey, this is my house, and you say, yes, it is, then when it gets built, it looks different because nobody went back out to reassess, or zoning and planning didn't send over and say, hey, the floor plan changed. And we ran into that in my neighborhood with a guy with seven bedrooms and three kitchens.
And if that's the problem, I would like for somebody to say, that's the problem. I don't, I don't care the reason. I want the problem to be fixed. And so I, I'm okay with, I don't have a problem with somebody looking at our processes to say, you're doing it right. You just need to tweak this. You need to tweak that, or here's something you missed. Because this is not the first time we've gotten complaints. We're always going to get complaints about taxes going up. But everything I looked on my properties and my family's properties, there's, this is going to be a big hit. And most people have not looked at their twenty-four taxes yet.
I didn't look at it until he sent it to me.
I, I didn't look at mine until I got a call on it. But I promise you, we're going to sit here in November, and we're going to get our tails handed to us.
No, we're not, because we know what's happening. So we're going to roll this thing back before September.
I want to make a comment. But roll it back based on what? An opinion?
Wait a minute.
Not, it's not by state regulation, because the regulation says we need between thirty-eight and forty-two.
So you know, but you know you won't do that. I mean, are you going to let everybody pay forty-five percent more on their taxes?
We're going to roll it back, whatever the state rules. But we're not fixing the problem if we don't have anybody look at it.
So let's, let's clarify this.
We're going to fix it internally.
The budget is what number right now? What's our annual budget, Jason? Twenty-two million? So if we're supposed to get a thirty percent sales tax or a tax increase, thirty percent of twenty-two million is six point six million, right? So you're telling me we're going to overcharge the taxpayer six point six million, and we only need twenty-two million? Or we're going to roll it back to six point six million that we know we need? I can make that adjustment.
And we still get the twenty-two million?
Exactly. We're still going to get twenty, we know exactly what we need.
Where we are last year, based on if the, if the value was right, whether they have to pay it, and we roll it back, and they don't have to pay it, it's the same difference. But not knowing what's causing us to get here is, is an issue for me.
I just don't want to invite anybody that's going to tell me that I have to charge them the extra six points.
They have to tell us.
But if we can roll it back anyway, then why do we need them to tell us?
Because I don't think we're going to get to where the state's requiring it. They have a standard. I don't think we're going to get to that standard based on how far we are right now.
I'm inclined to support John on this. I'd like to do something internal before I invite the state, and I'm, I'm not okay.
I want to make one comment. I, I have not seen the twenty twenty-four. When I got a phone call about it, I went and looked, and it was taken down. It was taken off.
You did it on your phone or do you, on your computer?
Desktop computer.
If you have key on map?
I did. And it has the, the map, the aerial photo. It has, I looked at it today, twenty-two, twenty-three. There is no twenty-four. The process of this works, we have an appointed Board of Assessors that approves, it's a document about this thick, that they approve at the monthly Board of Assessors meeting. That will be approved the first meeting of May. It will be submitted to Q Public to be published at that point. It'll be printed out. It'll be printed out, and it'll be, it will not go live until May fifteenth, the date the assessment notices are mailed. That's policy, that's the way it's always been done. They handle, I forget how many percentage of the state. Somebody made a boo-boo and hit a button. They have not gotten the ju, from what I understand, they have not gotten the Jones County numbers for this year. That company that publishes that record, or whatever, they put it online, I don't think they get, they have not been submitted the Jones County numbers yet. That's not even approved by the board of assessors.
They got the numbers somewhere.
That's another process issue I have, that somebody submitted something, because I printed all mine out, so I know it was there. I printed it to make sure that it didn't get disappeared.
I hope they're wrong in a shot in the dark, but I asked Anthony very point-blank, have the numbers been submitted to that company for Jones County? He said, no.
They're not doing our, they're not doing our assessment, so, I mean, I have, I have-
It could be some wild numbers that got put on there. I don't know.
But, it would have a motion to continue this discussion.
We, we, it'd be best to have Anthony come forward.
Chairman, Chairman, I make a motion to continue this, um, to the next meeting, and I'd also, uh, a friend-
I mean, if you wanted to continue the discussion, just have a motion to approve or motion to deny, then you all discuss it. Instead of discussing in full detail before there's-
Based on Commissioner Martin's comments, I, I, you know, he's, what plan would we have? Uh, if we don't have a plan, then I would make a motion that we're gonna ask the Department of Revenue to have us a review.
We have a motion, we have a second? Fail for him a second.
Okay. Do we have a motion for a plan going forward, or we just gonna let it happen?
I would like to get Anthony in here to, to, to talk to us about where, what he's seeing. And, because yes, I've, my house is a fifteen percent increase. I wanna know reasons and whys. Um, and then, at that point, if we need to bring in what we're opposing, I mean, what, what I'm opposing at this very moment, then that's what we can do. Because, if I've got a fifteen percent increase, that means everybody in my area is probably gonna have the same thing. I had a decrease in value two years ago, and it increased again last year and this year, so...
It, it's cra, and I, I'd like, I'd like to see-
We got a second on, you, you see that in the note?
She didn't motion, she just asked a question. Yeah. So, and, and again, I'm, I'm just doing this as a quick example. Old Clinton Road, two forty-eight versus two thirty-five. One is seventeen-hundred-and-sixty square foot, the other one is twenty-two-thirty. One recently sold for one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. And, within eight months, the other one sold for four-hundred thousand. I don't know those addresses, but that's the kind of stuff that's happening in our market. So, I don't know if it's... I'd like to hear Tony. I don't know what Brian would know, because Brian's been the tax commissioner for forever. I'd love to hear what he's seen and what he's heard around the county. And then, if Jason has had any experience with this, too, what are other counties doing when this happens? Right? How many assessors do we have? Cause it sounds like we might have a staffing issue, where we can't get everybody around to do it.
And I would, I like the point of having Anthony come, and he may want to bring some of the staff that actually goes and does the field assessment. Boots on the ground in the field, and they can explain, hey, look, we don't have the staff to do this every year. Or, we do have the staff, we're just busy doing this other stuff. I wanna hear, budget season's gonna be upon us very shortly. If they have some budget issues of not having enough staff to do the job, we need to know now, so we can put it into the budget and fully be able to do the job, so we don't have these issues.
I wanna know credentials, I wanna know certificat, this is where those credentials and certifications matter now. Um, I wanna know that, right? Cause if they're not qualified to assess my house, then we got another issue. So, Human Resources, please provide us with what is expected and required, and we need to know if that's an issue.
So, do you all want an agenda item then, for a work session?
That should be a work session, probably.
Tax assessor, tax commissioner? A work session?
I would say a work session, because you're getting to the nuts and the bolts of how it's put together.
I make a motion that we, um, put this agenda into a work session at the quickest time we can.
Second?
Second, discussion?
Because they are employees, four P M. work session, or you're gonna ask them to stay at five o'clock? Cause I don't know.
We're gonna do a four P, that way they won't have to stay late, but, uh-
Okay.
I, I wanna know from the state, if we don't comply, what happens? Are we gonna have that? Because, did we go up high enough this year? We've already told that we were too low. I, I, I wanna hear from you. Okay, if, if y'all don't, y'all don't get to the thirty-six, which is the minimum. Forty is where they want you at. They told you forty is really where they want you at. You're teetering anything less than forty and anything over forty. What's gonna happen if we don't hit thir-
Forty's the perfect number. It's from thirty-six to forty-four. If you're, if you're over forty, you're over assessing property. We don't have that issue in Jones County. Thankfully, we're on the lower side of forty. It means we're not char, we're not assessing enough. I get it. Values are low. But, I do look back to, I was told it's approximately fifty percent of the hundred-and-fifty-nine counties fall into this category, and there were some staffing changes in the Department of Revenue. I do understand that. I wanna know what sales did the state use to come up with their ratio? Did they just use a lower portion of the sales in the area? Or, did they use a broad spectrum from highs to the lows in their sales ratio? Because if they use a snapshot of something lower, then obviously, your sales ratio is gonna come in lower. But, it needs to be looked at in depth eventually, but we need to, I don't-
And I just wanna be clear, if the state says, make your people go to forty, is that what you're gonna do, Mr. Chairman?
Do you want the state to sit there and, and, and we, we loo, we, we get fined?
Well, I'd like to know that. You're talking hypothetical, you're talking factual about taxes.
In my newly-elected class, and it was one of the things we were, it, it-
I'm talking factual about taxes, sir. If the state says go to forty, are y'all gonna go to forty?
And then, roll it back where we need to. I, I'm for, I'm, I'm with that.
Okay, I just wanna clarify, cause-
But, I wanna clarify something, too, though. We sat in this board meeting not too long ago, when we were surprised by an audit that we didn't know anything about. When we got the dang audit paperwork, we were surprised that the city requested to have the, the appeal done. I asked Mr. George in that meeting, do we need to send legal representation? Nope, I got this. We were denied on the appeal, so the state has already done their resource, uh, look at what we're doing, and we're not doing something right.
We were told that we weren't high.
We're, we're low, and I, I don't, I don't think low means that we're doing something wrong. And maybe he's trying to do what's right by the people, by keep it low. And, and the, the consequence of that is, we look lower than the rest of the state. I'm okay with that, because for the level of services that we provide to people, fire, a road, and the sheriff's department, right? And trash, what else should they be paying for? Cause my road hadn't been paved in twenty years. I'm just saying. And if you're on Luke Smith Road, what did you get? Nothing. So, if the state says you should be at this level, for what purpose, other than collecting taxes? I'm not okay with that. I'm from Connecticut, Boston Tea Party, let's fight against taxes.
And my, my argument is that we, we got a, we got a, um, an audit.
By the way, I'm a Democrat, I'm fighting against taxes.
We got an audit, and we appealed that audit, saying, we don't think something is right about it, and we're protesting this audit. It wouldn't, we have found out from that audit, how they're doing the assessments, how they're expecting this, what numbers they're putting on us, how they're evaluating things. All those things should've been asked in the audit appeal, so that we would know what our issues were. But, yet, here we are, with still having the same issues. And, and it may be that we get an answer of, you're not gonna get this resolved unless you go up X percent. And, and, and I'm okay with that. But, to say that we have, we don't have lower taxes than any other county in-
I didn't say that.
Yeah.
I know that.
Any may.
No.
So, so, I, I'm all about paying what the taxes that I need to pay for the services that I'm expecting. But, it, whether you err on the side of low or high, it's still an error. And I, and I think we need to be fairly assessed, and we need to be able to, to tell the public that, when you get a extremely high tax bill this year, you know what's gonna be the first thing that's said? Y'all commissioners are killing me, y'all went up on my taxes again.
And again, we have an opportunity to tell people, hey, we have been lower on the assessments, and this is why it's triggering this way, based on what the state has done. And what we're gonna do is roll it back, so it's not gonna be an issue. We have the ability to communicate that, as opposed to saying, the sky is falling.
We do, and we have, and, and to be clear, since we've, since, for the last two terms, we have never raised taxes.
Three terms, sir.
We've never raised taxes.
And no audit, either. I'm just saying.
Yep. You know what? I'm okay with having people look, if I got nothing to hide, and that, and that it is what it is.
But, Sam, that is beautiful. You just said you wanna pay the taxes that you're due, but the complaint is because people are getting higher taxes. That's a conundrum, and we would-
Because they're not due.
I'm just saying. If you wanna pay your taxes, you wouldn't complain, just pay them. I didn't have a complaint, I'm just gonna pay my taxes in Jones County.
No, you're not.
I am gonna, I've never, I've never, I've never contested. I've never contested my taxes here in Jones County. I might pay them late, cause I forgot or something, but they get paid.
Strike that from the record, Chairman.
But, I don't wanna tax the people, so let's make that clear. We're gonna have a work session, and we're gonna get there.
I don't have nothing to hide. Like I said, it's all about accountability and transparency. We've, we've been told we're, we're too low. And, uh, they've given us an opportunity, I just don't wanna-
I think y'all should just pay higher taxes, let everybody else get lower taxes.
All right, well, we got a motion, a second. All favor eye?
Uh, we're looking at four o'clock at the next board meeting.
Is that May?
Third.
If y'all collect all this excess money, I just want y'all to give it to the fire department, okay?
May seventh.
May seventh.
Okay. Y'all see him clapping, we're gonna see. That's six million.
I don't care what, what it costs to keep this community safe.
Okay.
Whether it be the sheriff or the fire department, and I don't think there's-
I said fire department, I said nothing about the sheriff. I got enough.
I, I'm adding both.
No, no. He's got enough cars.
All right, let's move on. Uh, Ms., Ms. Wagner.
We'll see.
County Board of Commissioners Facebook page. We've having issues with getting stuck, not having issues, but I think it'd be a better way to be better communicating. What do you think?
The chairman asked, um, me to put this on the agenda, to see if the board would like to do, uh, Jones County Board of Commissioners Facebook page for informational purposes.
Well, we've got Public Works, we've got Water Department.
Informational?
Yes.
Okay. Who's gonna be responsible for it?
You'll be the admin of that page. And, and there's other counties around that have very ins, informative pages. I spoke with Ms. Wagner the other day and used, I just pulled Monroe County up, and I showed, handed her my phone, and just showed her, scrolled through the Monroe County page. It had fire, it had sheriff's department, had E M A, it had, um, where maybe some deputies or police officers graduating Jipstick, getting their mandate completed. Lost child, you know, missing person. It was very informative.
So, just so I'm clear, the comments from the public, which I'm okay with, especially here, you're gonna entertain that or not entertain it? Cause it's information only, okay? But, I just wanna know how you're gonna respond to all of that? Cause then it'll be, you're not responding.
You're gonna make it where they can't make comments, can't, cause I don't wanna suppress freedom of speech.
I, I don't doubt it, but I'm just looking at the messages we got for the fire, and I'm like, wow. Y'all wanna do that?
You can make it where it's post-only, just information, information only.
Another source to get, get the, uh, word out, cause a lot of people are not going to our website. So, it just gives them an opportunity that, uh-
Remind them when we have the holidays and-
Weather updates, anything can be posted there.
Motion to approve.
Second.
God bless you.
Any more discussion? All favor eye?
Eye.
Thank y'all. Thank you, it's been great, too. Uh, old business, fire and E M A.
Somebody cusses at her.
We had a great work, so we've had three great work sessions with, uh, all I can say is I'm very proud. Very proud of what y'all brought to us and the dedication you have for this community.
Motion to approve the E M A fire plan that was presented? Is that what you're asking for, sir?
Yes, correct.
Motion.
Just, uh, to start.
Second.
Second, we, to start.
Discussion, it was interim.
Okay, we'll, to start, I mean, immediately after the discussion, to go ahead, cause we've got, what?
Yes.
Four or five weeks?
Do you have the exact details to put in the motion?
Well, I, I was gonna make a friendly, a friendly amendment to the motion to clarify what we're moving from and to.
Hold on. Um, I would like to rescind my previous motion.
I'll rescind my second.
All right.
Sam, go ahead.
Chairman, I, I will make a motion that we go from the current full-time fire chief, E M A director, and full-time E M A director administrator, and part-time assistant chief to a full-time fire chief, a full-time E M A director, a full-time assistant chief, and a full-time administrator, with the knowledge that we will appoint the current assistant fire chief as the interim chief, until that position is filled.
Second? Second. Any more discussion? If none, all favor eye? None opposed? Eyes have it. Mr. Rizner, T-Splosh, maybe we'll get out here by seven, what do you think? We're trying.
I'll do my best. So, after our previous discussions about, um, T-Splosh, um, just a few updates real quick. The, the city has finalized their, their project list, they've approved that, and you have that, uh, in your, in your packet here. And they have approved the intergovernmental agreement. Really, what we need now is to, to finalize our project list. Um, and so, uh, the, the city's list is on, uh, twenty and twenty-one, and so, um, if you wanna take a look at that, um, in terms of our list, I know the board expressed an interest in doing thirty percent for, for dirt roads. If you, if you flip over to the very last page there, um, page twenty-two, Tim and I did some, um, some figuring on exactly how much it costs to, to pave a mile of dirt road. And so, it comes out to just over a million dollars per mile on, on dirt road paving. Up at the top there, you see the four that we have kinda currently in, in process. McKay, Shady Road Plaza, Luke Smith, and Che Hall. Just those four roads would, would, uh, will cost five-point-eight million to get done. The, uh, if you do thirty percent of our T-Splosh share for dirt roads, it comes to three-point-eight million. And so, there's still a, a two-million-dollar shortfall, even if you, even if you decided you wanted to use thirty percent of the T-Splosh to fund these roads. And when we, when we initially started talking about these roads, uh, at least the right-of-way acquisition part, the, the plan was to use some of our capital reserves for, for those. Um, you know, you know, taking six million dollars out of the capital reserves would, um, be a, a substantial chunk of it. And I don't know if that's the board's wishes, or I wanted to get some clarification on, on that piece of it, and, uh, and just pass along to you what, what it would cost, um, per mile of, of dirt road. Couple other things real quick. The, the rail spur was mentioned last time. Tim gave me a cost of three million dollars on that one. Let's see. And then, I think that's about all I have right now. Just any additional feedback from, from the board on, on projects you'd like for us to, to do cost estimates on. Um, I said I was finished, but one more, uh, quick update. So, we've done, so the board approved the, basically the ten worst paved roads in the county to be done with this year's LMIG money. And that was based on some rough calculations that, that we had done. So we've actually gone now and visited, um, we've visited, uh, seven of the ten. And it's obvious to us at this point that it's gonna take, to do those ten worst roads, excuse me, it's gonna take our current year's LMIG funds plus that supplemental LMIG, the nine hundred and ten thousand. It's, it's north of two million, yeah, north of two million dollars to do those, uh, ten roads. So, really, um, you'd be looking at your, your T-Splosts kind of picking up, uh, beyond those, those ten worst. So I've thrown a lot at y'all. Uh, just let me know what questions or, or thoughts y'all might have.
Well, if we used the thirty percent on the dirt roads and used the, this shortfall, like you said, and let's just, let's say T-Splosh passes and package sales pass, we all said, that using the package sales for our roads also, that could be a, a supplemental fund to, to, uh, to make up the shortfall there. That's how I look at it. Any thoughts from the board?
I think that's revenue. We can, we can do that to get any shortfalls we want, just like we're talking about with, uh, contingency money for, or construction money out of these, because, um, I guess taking it one at a time, the, the thirty percent for the dirt roads, um, you know, I think that, that doesn't get us very far down the list, one road and then a little change. I'm okay with, personally, I'm okay with using the additional allocated LMIG funds to finish the ten roads that we had promised. Like to know how much of the, of the next part of that list would our, um, T-Splosts cover. But we talked about additional. I know one of the things that I keep, I keep thinking about, we talked about is, um, you know, the, the parking lot at eighteen. I think that's, to me, that's important. Um, we're, we're gonna keep maintaining that one and that used quite a bit. It would, it would just make life so much easier and not have gravel. So, and I say that when I don't have kids in there anymore. Mine's too grown.
That's even, uh, that's even more fun.
Yeah, well, I got grandbabies up there, but that's only once that I gotta go up there. Once or twice.
You know, I, I believe we keep the project list like we had. You include the rail spur in case we have that opportunity, um, with a prospect. We're not gonna allocate three million. I remember when that rail spur was a million dollars. Thirty percent dirt roads, it's a no-brainer, but just because we haven't made that allocation, I'm not excited about only point four-four miles of Luke Smith Road. I, I don't know how we figured that particular number, um, considering the road is this big. So, reallocating the balance of, uh, any LMIG funds and then, of course, tapping into, uh, any excess funds. I would go so far as to say, if there is any additional funds that we normally anticipate in the summer, that we do not open that up for department heads. We roll that into roads, uh, because we're behind. Um, and at this rate, you know, many of us were transitioned and not completed the roads. So, we pray for package sales because that's the key to getting out of it, um.
I think one of the other things that we need to think about too is, I'm with Daylon on that point four-four, tenths of a mile being paved at Luke Smith when it's not benefiting but one resident, two, well, three residents to attach them to the other part that's already paved. And the rest of that road deserves to be paved too, because that's where it's in the worst shape at. But growing up on a dirt road, um, I know the value of growing up on those dirt roads, but I also know now we have teenagers that are put in vehicles that, um, are not passed down from their grandmamas. And, um, everybody has a lead foot when they hit the dirt roads. So, um, it's not gonna slow them down any. It's just gonna stop the amount of dust rolling up, um. I personally, I don't want my dirt road paved. I only have three houses on my dirt road, so I don't want Brown's Junction paved. Um, but I know those around me do. We have to educate every one of y'all the importance of T-Splosts. And we can't go out there to the public and educate them what T-Splosts is. We lost out on a regional T-Splosh a few years ago that would have benefited us greatly, but because of the fact that nobody had the education of facts behind it, it did not pass. It was a tax that would, for counties, Monroe, Jones, Houston, and Bibb or Peach.
It's more for, it's regional.
Data regional is all eleven.
So, all of those other counties had an interstate that went through them. That money would have been spread equally between all of the counties. We would have been making all the taxes off interstate sales instead of just what Jones County has. So, we lost out on lots of money by not going in with that regi- regional T-Splosts. But this is a way that everybody that comes through Jones County is taxed. If they stop to get a drink, if they stop to get a hamburger, if they stop to use the chargers for their electric cars, we're getting taxes off of it. It's not based on that household being taxed. So, this is a great way for us to make some extra incomes, to be able to make our money go a long way to pave roads, to repair roads. Um, package sales is another way that we can increase that. People in Jones County are already buying it. Let's not be naive. Um, they're just spending their money now in Bibb County and Baldwin County, and they're getting our taxpayers, they're getting our tax money.
Careful promoting.
Huh?
Careful promoting.
I know, I'm sorry. It's just fair.
Jason, do you need a motion from them first to use the supplemental LMIG to complete the ten worst list?
Yes, that would be good. That would.
Okay, let's start with that.
Alright, who wants to do a motion on that?
A motion to approve, uh, using the supplemental funds to cover the ten identical, it's not ten, it's.
Well, it's actually, so the, the ten worst is, it's, uh, Chippendale, Jeffy Russell, Mattie Wells Drive, Green Shade Drive, Regency Court, Teresa Circle, Woodall Drive, Greenbrier Drive, Homestead Drive, and Prince Hilton Court.
What he said.
Second. Any more discussion? All favor eye?
Aye.
Now, you need a motion to, uh.
What do you need regarding the T-Splosts as far as the list? I mean, you all see what, I think what Jason needs is direction from you all because the city sort of came up with their list and he know, needs to know how to draft your intentions for the language of T-Splosts, so.
Yep. So Commissioner Kitchens mentioned the parking lot. We can get an updated price on, on that. And then, just any, anything else y'all can think of that, uh.
So, you, you want the list regardless of the price or cost to get it done, correct?
Uh, so you could, you could do it any of, any number of different ways. You could, um, you know, you can do specific things like that, um.
I'm just asking what you need, because the parking lot is okay, but their roads are the priority. And that's why I'm asking the question, because then I'm gonna ask the next question is, is McKay and the other road more important than getting Luke Smith done? That's been on the roads list for twenty-five years.
Than the parking lot?
Parking lot, sure. Um, or, or the other roads, because then I would say let's focus on that road, but list the other ones if we have extra. Because McKay Road has been on the roads list for longer than I've been a commissioner.
Commissioner Volf, McKay and, and Chee Hall there for the school board.
And Luke Smith.
And Luke Smith. And it was that little short, the whole, the whole.
Whole road.
Alright.
So, is McKay more important than Luke Smith to you?
For transportation? It's a safer road than Plenitude, which everybody cuts down coming off of the river road.
So you're saying it could reduce the traffic on Plenitude if McKay is paved?
Right. Some dangerous curves on Plenitude.
So you would want to allocate the thirty percent in your list, the thirty percent for dirt, be allocated to McKay? Knowing y'all can't do this whole list at this point. If, I mean, that, Jason, is that what you need from him?
Yeah. Yeah, I, so, and so I think part of this too is, you know, y'all have to kind of decide if, how, how much detail you think is necessary, that, that, that the public wants, uh, as they kind of evaluate this. You know, you could, you could just say thirty percent for dirt roads and leave it at that, and then identify some other projects, or just say, you know, thirty percent for dirt roads and the balance for resurfacing, um, and some portion for the parking lot and, or however you want to do it. So I, I think you've got all the flexibility possible in terms of, as long as it meets that, um, state law definition of transportation projects, you've got a lot of flexibility on how specific or how, uh, just sort of broad you want to be, yeah.
So they could say thirty for dirt, sixty for resurfacing, and ten for parking lot or something. That's what you're ne- needing from them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that what y'all want to do?
I'm, I'm fine with the numbers, but I, I do think we need to be clear on what our plans to do with that thirty, sixty, and ten percent are. Because, I mean, there's a little bit of flexibility and cost increases and decreases and all that kind of stuff, but, um, I, I'll go back to, we've been talking about roads list. It's longer than we've been in office, probably longer than Daylon's been in office. And that's the first thing we hear is, I, I've been on this list for, and we understand that dirt roads are different because people say, well, I've been on the road for this list for twenty-five years. That's right, because we never got fifty or seventy-five percent of the people wanting it paid for twenty-five years, so you never moved. But now that we have that, now that we have right-of-way acquisition, looking at acquisition, looking at right-of-ways and all that, it's re, when it gets down to the, to meat and the potatoes of, how's it gonna be funded and we've got a funding source? I think we gotta be honest and say, is this road gonna be done with this money? And compliment Sam's approach to it. If we're too vague, it could hurt our approach to getting the voters the information they need, so it gets approved in the vote. I'm trying to compliment your point. We need to be specific on what we're doing and not have it vague, because vague is not, you know, it's, I'm not one of these, let's vote for it and we'll read it later kind of guys. I want to know what I'm voting on, what, and taxpayers need to know what they're voting on.
You kind of need this now too, don't you?
We, we've got a little bit of time, but it's kind of, it's ticking. Yeah.
Well, we've got a list, the paved road list, and, because we got down to ten with LMIG and the, uh, additional allocation for those ten roads. The next part of that list, we've already prioritized them, and we also went back to looking at other roads that may not have been on that list. Where do they prioritize? What, what I think we need pretty quick is if we're evaluating roads that could be in worse shape than number eleven on our list, and it's gonna move up in front of eleven based on it falling apart a lot worse, um, we need to know that and we need to put that on the list too. But I think we've got a, but, at the end of the day, we gotta get a standard and we gotta stick to it. Because then whenever somebody says, my, my road's been on the list for twenty-five years, I want to be able to say, well, here's why. And if we, and, and if, and if they can justify that it's moved from four to eight, then five, six, and seven better be some really bad stuff. Or we don't, we're not being honest with them, so. Get a list, stick to it.
Clear as mud, right?
Jason, does that help you or not?
Some.
Confused even more, didn't it?
Listen, if we can help, and I'm okay with, with the dirt roads that are there, right? And then adding at least a sentence that said, other dirt roads, so we have the option, right?
Right.
Include the rail spur, the parking lot, as funds are available, um, because if we do get an influx, great. If we don't, then we have some flexibility to, to address it.
And you're, and you're addressing it to the, you know, actually addressing everything at that point where you just put it, correct?
And he's right. I don't want to prioritize the parking lot over a road. And if it means that we've got T-Splosts funds to go to a road, then we've got, uh, additional funds in general fund and contingency funds that we would have put towards an LMIG match or something that could pave a parking lot.
A lot, yes.
So Jason, can we, a, a motion at night to, to what Commissioner Martin's talking about? Which is kind of, I think, what everybody's kind of on board with? Would that be sufficient to submit it?
To bring our list back to us?
Yeah, I can bring it back at the next meeting and we should be good to go.
Alright, we just don't want to run it?
I do, yeah.
We, we don't want to, late night of you getting this thing to the state in town. It's a long ride to Atlanta, right?
We, yeah. We had a little bit of, uh, cushion built in the, the timeline there, so I, I think we'll be just fine.
Alright. By the next meeting, I guess we can put this into rest?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Mr. Mayor Protown, you ready to give our, our, uh, I see, I want to recognize you here. You want to give the, uh, the state of the city addressed to us for us tonight?
Sure.
You got five minutes.
No one wants to listen to me.
I agree. How's everyone? I, I first want to say, there's certainly a reason why little kids say they want to grow up to be firefighters and, and police officers, and, and that's thanks to this group of people here. Um, one of the greatest things, getting ready, getting to know the firefighters we have here, so I just want to say thank you. I appreciate what y'all do. I've talked to.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Commissioner Widener and Kitchens at length. I think it's a great, you know, y'all came up with a great idea. I'm excited to see y'all's idea. I'm excited to see y'all continue to work with the city and county and that continue to improve. Um, I think we've come a long way, so thank you to that. We've had a lot of great things going on in the city. You know, we just had the hometown spring festival. I hope everyone came out and had a good time. And every year, course of gold, continue to improve it. Ashley has done such a wonderful job, uh, with the Main Street Department and, and bringing things along. Other than that, you know, looking forward to the, the T-Splosts. I know we've presented a great list of things that I think will really resonate with the public. And, uh, it sounds like y'all are coming along with that as well, so I appreciate y'all for letting me come out and hang out tonight.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Ardo, I want to apologize. I forgot all about, uh, calling you forward on the T-Splosts. You have a question?
What is that?
If you'll come up here and introduce yourself on the microphone.
I'm St. Theodore. I live on Bethlehem Church Road. I moved down, down there in nineteen eighty-two, forty-two years ago. Somebody in the county, when we moved down there, told us that we was, uh, fourteen on the paving list. And the last list I've seen, which a couple of years ago sometime, somebody had a list, we'd moved all the way up to fourteen. We moved down there and it was, uh, this is about the T-Splosts and the paving list and how much is allocated to unpaved roads, to dirt roads, like we live on. We lived, moved down there and it was five or six cars a day came by. Now it is as many as a couple hundred a day. And we, uh, we're getting choked out in the dust so bad that it's not a fit place to live. And we've had more people down there. Back in, uh, when Tim Davis on the commission, he had got a stretch of county line close to us where our church is, at Bethlehem Baptist, paved, and they paved across, uh, on that county line of ways, uh, for people that hadn't lived down there very long. But as far as Bethlehem, we probably got more people that lived down there and more people that need some relief from the dust. We'd already started a process of, uh, the right-of-ways, and all of a sudden it just kind of, hadn't heard a thing about it since. And that was, I can't tell you how many years ago that was. But forty-two years is a long time, and that dust, everything that we got is inundated by it. We can deal with the mud. The county road department, they try very hard to maintain the road. They do, but they've got their hands full. I mean, they do, they just can't, you know, they haul, and all the gravel that's been hauled in down there and washed away over the years, it could have been paved by now. So I'm just, I'm just here saying that if we want to support a T-Splosh, I'd like to see more done for the unimproved roads that they might. I don't care if they're full of potholes. If we had some pavement to cut the dust down, it wouldn't make any difference to me. That's, that's what I got to say.
And I apologize again. I just, by the time I jumped with Mayor Protown, I thought, I forgot Mr. Ardo.
Yeah, but I just, you know, I wanted to, to make that point and say that, you know, I've, um, I've been, Chris is there before, we're running to him up at the West Clinton Tire and talked to him about it and all. And it's, it's miserable down there. I'm just telling you that when the mud's, the mud, we can deal with the mud, but the dust is, you, you, you can't live there anymore. I got, uh, on the way up here, I passed my ninety-two-year-old father-in-law that lives next door to me. And his air conditioning was broke. He was riding down the road with his window down. I thought, oh my goodness. And we get a lot of traffic through there. I mean, more than anybody would imagine.
Going to Dr. Dinnard's.
A lot of them going to Dinnard's. A lot of people are cutting through there to Gordon. And, uh, and there's people that ride the off-road vehicles down there with, uh, ATVs. But they're not, but they're not, the ones around there is not bad, but they do have a group of them from, uh, Gordon that come through there running seventy, eighty miles an hour. You can't even go, you can't even go out the door when they're that way. There's days you can hardly see the road from the dust. And I'm probably a hundred foot off the road. So, just, just my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now again, I apologize for missing. Department head. Jason, are you the only department head in here tonight?
Maybe. Um, Chairman, I think, uh, you and I talked a little bit earlier about the cemetery and, and, um, Lynn Stroger's over there, um, actively working on, uh, with the ground penetrating radar. We continue to be out ahead of him, uh, doing the. penetrating radar. We continue to be out ahead of him, uh, doing the clearing work there. Uh, I went out and visited with him some last week, and, uh, and we're north of five hundred unmarked graves that he's located so far. And so, uh, he, he's still got a good bit of work to, uh, to do there, and, um, we've got a couple of areas that are just off of the, uh, the parcel there that we're gonna take a look at and see if we need to expand, uh, just a little bit. But there's, uh, there are lots and lots of graves there, and, and, uh, we just continue to, to work on that project, so.
All right. Legal, anything? HR, anything? Citizen comments. Anybody that come forward tonight? Your citizen, you come up. You're the first one to shake, you're the first one to raise your hand.
And this applies to everybody, and Debbie would kill me if I forgot, so I've got to say it real quick. Um, next Tuesday night, the twenty-third, at six-thirty, correct? We start the Jones County Republican Party, the Jones County Newspaper, and the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a forum, um, for those positions that are coming up in May. So District Three, District Two, the Coroner's O- uh, Office, as well as the, uh, Board of Education, the District, District Two as well. It's going to be at Butler Hall. Um, I hope all of y'all come out. When, I know you said you'll be there, as well as John will be there, uh, as well as all of our candidates for those positions that'll be there. Yes, um, so.
How about you, Hartley, run for District Three, Commissioner?
Correct. So all of our candidates will be there. It'll be an exciting event. I hope everyone will come out. We'll have plenty of space. We'll have a refreshment. We'll have time for y'all to interact with all the, uh, candidates beforehand and, and get your questions in, so. Just wanted to let everyone know, I'm sorry about that before, but thank you.
You say you're cooking steaks?
Yeah, all steaks, right.
Any citizens tonight? Anyone? I'll get, do you want to get you in the back?
So, we're very good. How y'all doing? Mountain West, I live on Colly Road. I'm here at the behest of a poor soul on, uh, Graham, two thousand, was it two thousand three Graham, huh? And this is, uh, just a high deal, what they're dealing with. And I know, too, we don't, uh, the county only goes, like, what, thirteen dollars a mile? But, uh, if you look, the one, let's see, two, three plays back, there's about thirteen, fourteen feet where their house is literally in a hole. Um, and just the size of the coal going under the road is an issue. It feels like an eight-inch, ten-inch, probably be different. So, uh, it's just something for the board to think about. Behind, their backyard is, uh, Walnut Creek. So State Waterway, and the water we're going, you know, crossing Graham Road going in there. So they're kind of in a, in a bind, you know, to be honest, and, uh, they don't know which way to turn. So, you know, I have no dog in the fight. I'm really just trying to help them come up with some kind of, because y'all know that the, you know, the county or commission could help them out in some way, shape, or form, because eventually, not sure to, I mean, it'll be condemned. I mean, you know, nobody'd be able to live in. And then, you know, they just got a hunk of dirt. But, um, and Sam, I don't know if Martin would be able to help us out, since he's right on the line. He's literally right on the county line, so I don't know. And that's, that's all I got. Um, any questions or concerns, everybody can call and cuss me out or whatever, but I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Oh, I was just gonna say, we, we'd already gotten this call, and I spoke with Public Works about it. They've been out with that at once, trying to come up with a game plan of what we can do.
Yeah, it is bad, I mean.
I mean, certain parts of it are off of the county right-of-way.
Yeah.
Um, but it's, uh, yeah.
If you walk back and look at, I mean, it, uh, you know, it'd be good to go look, just to put eyes on it.
Yeah, I've been over a couple times. It's just a big creek.
Yeah, it is, and, and, you know, who knows? But, uh, that's all, that's all I got. Thank y'all so much.
Got German in the back.
Hey, y'all, I'm John Avery. I live down on Chambers Road. Uh, now I had a question.
Okay.
One time before, we had a splash that paved the roads. What happened to it? Anybody remember a splash in Jones County? I remember, I remember, I voted for it, but I never seen what it done.
This is a T-S.
I was talking to Jason yesterday about this, and I'm kind of concerned about what went with the money from the first one we had, because, I mean, we, I know we went past, but we never got, we, I never seen any income from it.
Yeah, we've had splash year after year. I even won ones.
In one year, it was for dirt roads, but dirt roads, we didn't get any dirt roads paved that year, or the next year, or the next year. And it's very few dirt roads paved in Jones County in the last twenty years. Y'all know that, good as I do.
Yeah, if, if it was a splash.
And Chambers Road has been first, second, and third, and I don't even know where it's at now, because I quit, quit gathering it, because, I mean, we was talking about that when you first went in office. That, it was on, it was two liens, and I don't even know where it's at no more. I hadn't even looked, because it, I mean, it's just like, I was talking to Jason yesterday, I kind of, I said, it's kind of like throwing bad money after bad money. Put gravel on that road out here, road scrape come by and puts it in the ditch. I talked to the Mr. Wood this morning. He called me today. Super nice guy, sound like he wants to do a good job, but you can only do so much when you don't have nothing to work with. So T-Splash money, instead of spending it all on one road, we need to spread it out through the county and do some good with it, and put ditches back in, crown the roads like it used to be, where the road, water would actually run off the road. And, I mean, that's, that's kind of what I wanted to say tonight. But, uh, we're go, I want to know more about the splash. Is there any way we can get an article written about what a splash is supposed to do? Or, I mean, I can pull it up on the internet, but I want the candidate to know what the, what the splash is for, and I want them to know that the money is gonna be spent on what, what we say it's gonna be spent, not moved up to the City of Gray, or to Baldwin County line down there and put all in one spot or whatever, but, you know, it needs to be spread out. I mean, it needs to be equal. So that, that was all I want to say. Appreciate everybody, and thank you.
I, I want to be, I want to go with you. Say your name, address.
Give us your name, address. Introduce yourself.
Name is KI, Z-Z-I-A-H.
Where you live?
He, I live on Chambers Road.
Okay.
And, okay, I have not lived there forty, whatever he, he asked, but I was born there. I was born at home there on Chambers Road. But anyway, Johnny's right. I mean, I, I moved away and I came back. And I heard him read the roads, and, and I admit, I do not know the, the roads he, he's talking about. I do not know, but they, like he did, we voted too, and we were, yeah. And anybody that knows the history of Chambers Road, they know the, the end of Chambers Road is paved, and they've even repainted. Now here we are, on this, on the dirt end, and nothing's ever been done. Just like Johnny said, since I moved back, I've heard we've been first, two, three, whatever, and it doesn't matter. But we've also had a death on that road because of how bad it was. And I just think that more con- consideration should made for roads like ours, and like Steve said, in fact, and Steve is my preacher. And in fact, uh, just like probably other roads too, people cut through on our road to get from forty-nine to eighteen. So we have traffic from air, uh, you know, from other people. And, and I know, I sit here and I listen, you know, we have, we don't have much money. But then I listen to y'all talking about our taxes are gonna go up, and, which I did not know when I, when Johnny told me about the meeting. But I, I just do not understand why ro- some roads are, are always on the list and they get done, and a road like ours, a country road like ours does not get done. And just like Johnny said, or Steve said, whoever, we have the dust too. And I don't know who said our road's in such good condition, because the last rain we had, now I'm going with Johnny on this too, our road was covered in water, and it didn't run off for a couple days. And it is so bad in one place, it runs from the road down to Johnny's house. And I know I read, I heard what you said, and I know everybody wants to go, but I just want to say, if you want something approved, then you gotta get some results from it. And like I said, we moved back twenty years ago. We moved back to the place where my grandpa and grandma lived. And, and just like Johnny Avery, my parents, my grandparents was Avery's also, and they, you know, lived on the road, never left, never complained. And here I am, I'm complaining. Granddaughter, I'm complaining. But anyway, when you do consider these roads, don't just, you know, have somebody run, drive through and say, oh, yeah, this road is fine, because it's not, y'all. Anytime it really rains, any of y'all wants to, can't come down Chambers Road, and you, you're in a, a shock, because it is not that great a road. And I know these roads you talk about, I, like I said, I do not know about them, because I have not been there. But please consider us next time, because our road is bad. It's not as bad as probably some other roads, but, just anyway, like I said, think about Chambers Road next time. That little list you got, just trying to itch us up on it, you know, so, uh, say, oh, yeah, Chambers Road. I remember that, that old lady came, and she made her little talk, and put us past eight o'clock. Thank y'all, sorry.
Thank y'all. Anyone else tonight? Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Wood, you want to start us off tonight?
Well, I-
Commissioner comment?
All right, sure, yes, sir. I appreciate everybody coming, all of our, I appreciate our county fire department and all the people, and I invite more people to volunteer. And everybody has a few extra minutes they can give back to their community, and that's just one way they can do it. Um, good meeting tonight, and I want to invite the people to come to the Board of Taxes meeting, go to your planning zoning meeting, figure out how things in the county work before they get here, and you understand a little bit better. Go to those meetings, ask questions from the employees at those meetings and those board members, and you'll understand a little bit better how everything works, because it's in detailed process. Um, it's just a long meeting tonight, so it's, I'll hand it off to the next.
Um, thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you, everybody, for being involved. Thank you, everybody, for being passionate, um, including our commissioners, and, um, I appreciate the, the good discussions and, uh, and the different, differing of opinions. Uh, that gets us where we know we need to be. Um, I really appreciate that. So, thank you to everybody. We got, um, I don't want to mention this too much, because Wendy will start talking about it, but we do have the community-wide cleanup coming May the fourth on a Saturday, so if you're in District One, plan for it. If you're in District Three, don't worry about it. It's on May, it's on May eighteenth, if you're in District Three.
You want to start a, a team chairman? I think all the volunteer firemen could, uh, help me, uh, break up the monotony between these two, one year. What do you think? I'm game.
That's all I got, Chairman. Thank you.
I had to throw that one in there. Commissioner, Commissioner Vaughn, you, you get your time to sell.
That's not the important thing. April is National Childhood, Childhood Prevention Month. See something, say something.
National Childhood Prevention Month.
National Child Abuse Prevention. Sorry.
National Childhood Prevention Month.
Sorry, I was in such a hurry. Thank you.
We don't have kids, what's going on?
Yeah, there might, we might need to prevent on some, but, um, it's, uh, Child Abuse Prevention Month. So please make sure if you see something, say something. Um, you know, we teach our kids in schools to report bullying and all this other stuff, but as adults, sometimes we turn a blind eye to abuse that we see going on right around us. So see something, say something to help prevent national childhood, uh, na- National Child Abuse this month. Also, May fourth is a very important day, because I'm gonna be a three-peat winner on, uh, the Jones County Cleanup. So I've already got some teams signing up. If you're in District Three, let me know. I can tell you some roads to go clean up on. Um, Sam's just a sore loser over there, because before I came on the board, he was the winner, 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 and he hadn't won. We're gonna make it three years in a row. Thank you, Peewee. You start helping me, um, let me, well, we'll start on Chambers Road. I know. So, um-
That's right.
So I got some great teams, though, that do help out every year, and I appreciate them. I appreciate you guys out here, and ladies out here from Fire Rescue. Um, as, as, as I, once again, I see a lot of faces that I ran with many years ago that are still out there running every day. Um, and I appreciate y'all's longevity, because after getting paid to do it for years, it was no more fun to go run those rescue calls anymore for me, so I appreciate y'all. Um, I, great news to hear that he's there at the State Place Cemetery. Um, hate to hear that he's already found five hundred unmarked graves. Um, but we knew that was a possibility that we were stepping into with it, so, um, I think I'm gonna go visit tomorrow with my camera. So, that's all I got to say.
Commissioner Martin?
Try and be as brief as I can. Echo everybody's sentiment. Fire Department, appreciate you. Cemetery, excited about what we're gonna discover, and hopefully there's an opportunity to leverage that to make sure that everybody's aware, uh, of the significance of what we do find out there, and most importantly, connecting families, um, with those individuals. Uh, roads, uh, Jason, we need you to post that roads list and the process, how we got there. For those that don't know, real quickly, we hired an outside consulting group that came in, and they evaluated all of our roads, so it's not just drive-by by us or Public Works, not the dirt roads, thank you. Um, but it's by a team who knows how to do this. So that list was developed without any biases from us, at least I hope it was. Um, and that way, it, it, it should be done with integrity, um, and fidelity, so you know if road seven hundred is seven hundred, it's probably because it is the best road in the county. Um, and hopefully, with the T-Splosh, if we educate everyone and you guys, pass the word, we can get those roads done. Um, other than that, it's, it's impossible. How many paved roads do we have? Six hundred plus paved roads. And if it takes us a million dollars to pave a dirt road, you do the math. Um, we'll be in heaven somewhere talking about, man, Jones County still didn't pave those roads. So, um, without T-Splosh and without PAG sales, it becomes real improbable for us to do that. So pass the word, because we really can advocate for it. Taxes, I hope we do find a solution for it. Um, at the end of the day, nobody wants to pay more taxes. I know I don't. Um, and we're going to figure out a solution here that prevents it from happening in the future, because at the end of the day, that's what we want. Um, it's a great thing to have great sales in your county, because that means people want to come live here. It's terrible that some people have overpaid to move here. Um, and I hope that our values stay at a place in the market where people get what they put into the homes. And for those of us getting ready to retire, we can enjoy some of those resources, whether we stay in the county or end up in some blue-watered, white beach retirement home. Um, with that being said, thank y'all again. Come out and join. And we do have board positions that are coming up, so please join our boards, um, so that you can continue to be an active member of our community. We appreciate you.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, oh, favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.